We're ready to start MCTV.
Go ahead.
Perfect. Can we call it? We need to order. Roll call, please, Elaine.
Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
Councilmember Holliver.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was back. Let's keep going. He'll be here.
Okay, councilmember Fang?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Here.
Mayor Leva?
Here.
And once again, checking for councilmember Holliver?
Present.
Thank you. All councilmember are present.
Perfect. Can we all? Jean Perry, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a couple of ceremonial presentations tonight. We have first proclamation proclaiming April 29th as Arbor Day. And we have I'm sorry, my technology is so slow today. Elaine, who's going to be in the audience today for?
There'll be Community Enhancement Advisory Committee Chair.
Carol? Carol, are you here?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm good.
Well, happy proclamation day for whereas in 1872, 1872 Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now recognized throughout the nation and the world, reminding us that one person's initiative can make a lasting and meaningful difference. And the city has planted over 110 trees per year since 1994, helping to reduce the erosion of our topsoil, enhance our rural and urban landscapes, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource that must be managed and protected as they play roles in our everyday lives, regardless of where we live. Trees also also enhance the economic vitality of business areas and the beauty and beautify our community. And whereas the city is committed to the urban forestry and supporting programs for tree planting, such as the Millbrae Tree Dedication Program. And whereas the Millbrae community members have supported the tree dedication program by purchasing 50, 24 box coastlife oak trees to dedicate in honor of their loved ones. Parks Division installed irrigation and has planted trees and plaques along the spur trail for everyone to enjoy. Whereas on Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 to 10:00 in the city of Millbrae, Parks Division will be planting trees on the spur trail at Taylor Boulevard and Menorca Way to celebrate Arbor Day. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do proclaim April 29th as Arbor Day. Thank you for receiving this, Carol.
Oh, it's my pleasure. We've really, we've really been happy with the tree dedication program.
And as I understand, it sold out.
Pardon me?
As I understand, the program has sold out.
That's right. All 50 trees have been purchased. Thank you very much, citizens of Millbrae.
Will you be?
We thank you, council, for encouraging the program. And I want to thank my committee members for being so helpful, both past and present. And Tom Williams. And I want to thank Andrea for helping us. And I would like to thank Parks for all their hard work.
Thank you for all the work you do too, Carol.
Well, I appreciate it.
You've you've made the the community very pretty and enhanced it and preserved it as well. So thank you for everything you do.
Well, thank you. And that hill looks a lot better than it did. Okay.
Alrighty.
Alrighty.
Our next proclamation is proclaiming the month of May as Asian, African American, and Pacific Island Islander Heritage. And we have we have Grace Hori Curry?
Yeah, you're perfect, Mayor.
I get it right? Hori Curry?
All right, Karen. Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
And the proclamation reads as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Heritage Month is observed in May to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions of Asian and Pacific American history, culture, and achievements. And whereas by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of Asian American and Pacific Islander men and women, we celebrate the importance of inclusion in building a brighter future. And whereas American and Asian American and Pacific Islanders enrich our history, society, and culture as leaders across many industries. And whereas we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance Asian American and Pacific Islanders must put forth to be heard, seen. These additional efforts are a result of inequitable institutional and systematic injustice. And whereas since COVID-19 pandemic, Asian Americans have faced heightened fear of increasing rates of anti-Asian harassment and violence. And the city of Millbrae encourages all residents to learn more about Asian American Pacific Islanders heritage and work to combat racism and as will be throughout cultural events and educational activities. Whereas the Millbrae community has benefited through the cultural witnesses, diversity, and generosity of its local Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Leva, and all the city council members on behalf of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month Board and Committee. You know, we want to thank you all for this recognition. This year's celebration theme is forging community bonds. And I think, you know, by having this kind of interaction, inviting many others to join in the celebration, it's really gonna, you know, make this theme even more important. I want to also thank one of our publicity partners, who is the Millbrae Sister Cities Commission, that is helping us with the outreach as well. And I do invite all of you, the council, Mayor, and the council members to the May 4th Asian Heritage Month Celebration that will take place at Herb's Theater, followed by reception at City Hall, and it starts at 5:30. And I'll send you all the link. So thank you again. What an honor and what a pleasure to see all your faces too. Great job to all of the councilmember and mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for being part of this beautiful community of ours. Next, we have a proclamation complaint proclaiming the month of May as Mental Health Month. And we have Jean Perry accepting this proclamation for excuse me. Whereas the mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being and mental health issues are prevalent in the nation with one in five adults experience a mental health issue every year. And the COVID-19 pandemic has increased the number of people experiencing feelings of anxiety and depression. And whereas last year, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a health advisory on youth's mental health crisis that has been further exposed by the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas one out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health condition have difficulty functioning everyday life, and if left untreated, have a life expectancy 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions and can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And where whereas this year's May Mental Health Month theme, encourages everyone to take actionable steps towards addressing mental health and substance use conditions with an overreaching goal to support mental wellness. Therefore, the members of the city council do by hereby do hereby May claim proclaim May 2022, isn't it? Should say 22.
I apologize. I will update.
No, no, no worries. Mental Health Month to enhance public awareness of mental health to help end stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. Thank you, Jean, for accepting this.
Thank you. And Mayor Leva, I don't know if you or Tom can tell the public about the the plan to light up City Hall in lime green in honor of May Mental Health. That's exciting. As we approach the May Mental Health Month, I want to thank you for bringing awareness tonight to the importance of mental health for our individual and community wellness. There is no question that the stressors of the COVID-19 pandemic have increased the number of people experiencing feelings of anxiety and depression. We have all had the limits of our resilience tested. I want to honor the person-to-person service I have witnessed in our community during these stressful times. I would propose that we take that momentum to continue to support wellness, building resilience, counter stigma, and educate ourselves regarding the treatable nature of mental health and substance use disorders. Individuals experiencing challenges of mental health and substance use disorders can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. We can and do take steps in supporting mental health here in Millbrae. Our mayor is a member of the Mayor's Council on on mental health for our county. Yes? And and a large percentage of our CERT volunteers have been trained in mental health first aid. And many older adults in Millbrae are participating in Peninsula Family Services Program for peer counseling and both in providing the training and the counseling to peers and also in receiving the the counseling and and attending support groups that which are available in many, many languages. We have availability of the mental health first aid class for English, Cantonese, and Mandarin. And we'll soon have Spanish available. There is a training that a little short, kind of a person-to-person entry way to learn about how to recognize when someone is experiencing mental distress called Be Sensitive, Be Brave. And there's an additional class about specifically about suicide prevention. We actually did this class for our teens, co-hosted by the Millbrae Leos last September. And I highly recommend it. It's going to be more widely available. In fact, there there's a class in Mandarin, I believe, next week. There's a whole calendar of events for May regarding mental health. And I hope you'll take a look at the the calendar, which is at smcmentalhealthmonth.org. And I will get the the calendar to Elaine too. So there are events close by that were are great opportunities to understand how to promote your own wellness, how to support people who are experiencing a lack of wellness and promote recovery. So thank you. And I hope we can continue on the path of promoting mental wellness.
Eugene, you know, Jean, earlier today, we had another meeting, a month of May for older Americans. And you shared a statistic that was alarming to me that I thought maybe might be useful, especially in our city, about the rate of suicide. Would I don't want to repeat it because I probably will blow it, but if you did.
So one of the in our county, we don't have numbers as specific as cities because then you could figure out who the individuals were. But on a county level, we have noted this year a high rate of suicide in older men and particularly older men who have immigrated here from Asian countries. And and certainly, that's as important as the high rate of suicide among our youth. And both of those things seem to have been stirred up and increased during the stressors of the pandemic. So so yeah, that's that's pretty concerning. And we hope to allow more people in our community to be the eyes and ears that can recognize when people are experiencing distress and help guide them to the right kind of health.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you for taking this on. You're you're you have an amazing, amazing job. Appreciate what you do. Okay, next up, we have the National histor- historical preservation established in May, and that is John Muniz. Is he here tonight? John?
Here I am.
There you are. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973 to promote historic places and demonstrate the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Millbrae and surrounding communities. And whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the city of Millbrae is a proud is proud of its historical buildings and dedicated residents. In 1985, the Millbrae Historical Society relocated the Spring Valley Water Company Manager's House to the Millbrae Civic Center, which is well-known as the Millbrae Museum. Well, and whereas it is important to celebrate the contributions made by the dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us. And whereas preserving the historic resources, it is vital to ensuring the success of our commercial and residential environment and maintaining the character and the heritage of the city of Millbrae. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Historical Preservation Month. Thank you for accepting this, John.
Thank you, Mayor Leva, city council members, and the great city of Millbrae. Thank you so much for keeping history alive by proclaiming May as National Historic Preservation Month throughout our city. I am honored to be able to receive this proclamation and display it prominently at the Millbrae Museum. History has been an integral part and an important part of our Millbrae community, our state, and our country. History creates a rich, more complete picture of where we came from and where we are headed as a society. Through history, we can learn how past societies, cultures, and governments were built and to learn from our past mistakes. As a result, history helps us become more compassionate as a people and more impartial as decision makers. One can hope. As Millbrae Historical Society celebrates 52 years of preserving and enhancing the great history of Millbrae and surrounding communities, our motto being, "The past is our key to the future." I am looking forward to another important event in the history of the great city of Millbrae. Our 75th Diamond Jubilee Anniversary is fast approaching. January 14th, 1948 to January 14th, 2023. 75 years of incorporation as the jewel of the peninsula, gateway to San Francisco, and gateway to the world. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Very nice. Very well said. Thank you for everything you do as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have Rochelle. Rochelle Mullen.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Rochelle. This is for a proclamation proclaiming the month of May, Older Americans Month. Whereas each May, the United States Department of Health and Human Services Administration for the Community Living Community Living Leads Our Nation Observance for Older Americans Month. And whereas this year's theme for 2022 is Age My Way, an opportunity for all of us to explore the many ways older adults can remain in and be involved with their communities. And whereas a growing number of the city's population are older Americans with great source of skills, wisdom, and experience upon which our community has been built and continues to enrich our daily lives. Whereas all persons reaching their later years should have the opportunity to share fully in the benefits of our advances, economic wealth, science, technology, and culture. And whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes the need to create a community that provides the services and the supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently. And whereas the city of Millbrae can work to build an even better community for older residents by planning programs that encourage independence and sharing the wealth of knowledge and ensuring activities that are responsive to individual needs and preferences, preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging place. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month. And Rochelle, no better person than to say Age My Way to accept this by saying Age My Way and describing adults that remain in our community very involved. Rochelle, you are very involved in our community, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank you for this proclamation. All the previous proclamations seem to impact our senior constituents in the city. The Asian American, we have a large Asian American senior population. The mental health aspect, thanks to Jean, providing us with information that the county have provides for seniors in the realm of mental health. We appreciate all of that involves. We want to thank the city of Millbrae, who has supported everything that we've asked in the way of support for the seniors, the support of this, the oh, my goodness, the the lunches that the Asian American people are providing, the the support of that for for that. We're looking forward to this using the Senior Lounge in the upcoming new Millbrae Rec Center. We'll be putting our proclamation up, I hope, in the Senior Lounge. The city has always supported everything that we've asked for. We're we are part of also the making Millbrae an age-friendly city, part of San Mateo County's goal of making every city in San Mateo County age-friendly towards seniors. And Jean's on that, and you are on that task force. And we look forward to some of the things that will solve some of the problems that we have regarding. But the city has always been there for us. You, in some cases, are the children of the seniors who live here. And so we appreciate all the input that you give us, both Ann and Wayne. And you have been very supportive of what we're looking forward to. We're looking forward to reaching out more to seniors, finding ways to include them in things, like making phone calls on their birthdays, getting more communication of what is out there for seniors, especially those that are isolated. And we appreciate everything you've done to help us. Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate you. And I think that you mentioned the task force team. That's that's a good a good thing to mention. We have Jean Perry here, John Muniz, Gina Pappin, and you and myself. If anybody has any some good suggestions, we can bring it to that task force team. So feel free to reach out to any of us. When I'm speaking for you guys, feel free to reach out to to me. But anybody that that has some good ideas will will bring force to the county. Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Okay, is that the proclamations for tonight? Yes. So we're going to move to agenda overview. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to just do my staff briefing upfront. I've got several items this evening. I'd like to share with the city council. First and foremost, there was some discussion at the last meeting about just sharing more information about what we're doing out with Public Works and making improvements. So a couple of projects that we have fast-tracked and are moving forward. This is just some photos of of work that was done, just completed last week, actually. A new sewer line through the Lincoln Circle Loop right off of Richmond Drive. So we accelerated sewer, water, storm drain in an effort to repave Lincoln Circle. And so we're pursuing now the repaving of Lincoln Circle. This has a PCI of 12. It's one of the lowest actually in the city. So we provided the opportunity to get all of these improvements done and follow the one-dig policy of the city council. Also, taking advantage of the construction, this was not part of the TOD2 project, known as the Gateway. But we are, we did take advantage of doing a major sewer improvement. This is a pipe bursting project for sewer main along Aviador. It does not serve TOD2. It actually serves the community off of Aviador and on the south side of Millbrae Avenue. But with the repaving of Aviador as part of the TOD2 project, we were able to sneak this project in and get it done and have a major sewer improvement project over on Aviador. And then lastly, these are curb gutter and some sidewalk improvements out on Millbrae Avenue along the spur trail. These were desperately needed improvements. A lot of cracking and chipping and and earth movement out on Millbrae Avenue. So these are just a few of the improvements that we've been able to bring forward and accelerate. There's two actually on the agenda this evening on the consent calendar. Also, I've got great news. I'd like to note that the end of last year, San Francisco Airport, SFO, committed to us that by the end of the year that they would submit a work plan to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so U.S. Fish and Wildlife could review and approve by April, the clearing of or cleaning of the Lomita Canal to assist with rain flow. I'd like to recognize and thank Kathy Widener over at SFO for working with us and making that happen. SFO did receive approval from U.S. Fish and Wildlife to conduct end canal cleaning work from August 15th through October 15th, with an extension to October 31st if necessary. So all of the folks out at Landing Lane will see SFO crews out starting August 15th, clearing the Lomita Canal. Also, we have several events coming up. The first, if everyone puts on their calendar, May 7th, which is a week from this Saturday, starting at 9:00 a.m., a celebration of Earth Month with tree planting and park cleanup. Volunteers will meet at 9:00 a.m. at the spur trail at the end of Taylor Boulevard near where the spur trail and Taylor Middle School are located to plant trees along the spur trail. And then at 10:00 a.m., we'll move over and volunteers that don't attend 9:00 a.m. can attend 10:00 a.m. and meet at Rotary Park, which is located at the corner of Millbrae Avenue and Ashton, to pick up litter and clean the park. All of the volunteers, lunch will be provided at 12:00 p.m. at Rotary Park. So we hope to get a good group out for tree planting and cleanup to celebrate Earth Day. Also, as you know, I mentioned the environmental essay contest. This was open to high school students that reside in Millbrae or attend Mills High School or Cappuccino High School. The top three finalists were awarded academic scholarships. First place is awarded to Kalisa Chu from Mills High School. She's with the class of 2025. Second place was awarded to Gianna Lumanian from Mercy High School in the class of 2022. And third place was awarded to Elizabeth Bowers from Mills High School, class of 2025. So we'd like to thank all of the students who participated in the essay contest and especially the winners, the the three top winners and the scholarship. Also, we have the Citizens Academy. Notices went out a few days ago, and we're excited about the very first Millbrae Citizens Academy. It will begin on May 21st. and we're excited about the very first Millbrae Citizens Academy. It will begin on May twenty-first and will conclude on July ninth. The academy is designed to help Millbrae residents eighteen years and older to learn about city government, our processes and functions. The Citizens Academy is an excellent opportunity for any resident to become more familiar, again, with the city structure, operations, how councils are elected, information on, on the newly created five city council district, districts, and registration is now open on our website. And applications that, that people can fill out can again be found on our website. If there are any questions, you can contact Justine Bleeker. She's our public information officer at PIO@ci.milbrae.ca.us. So again, PIO@ci.milbrae.ca.us. Couple more things on the calendar. We have our first movie in the park on May thirteenth and also the Central Park ribbon cutting. So we, we did bring in new playground equipment and redid the Central Park Playground, which was in desperate need. The ribbon cutting ceremony will begin at six thirty P.M. to officially open the playground. So exciting. And then the movie will start at sundown. So we look for a great group to attend the ribbon cutting for the new play equipment and also the movie in the park on May thirteenth. Also, this time of year, it always brings a bit of sadness, and it's a reminder to the Millbrae community that we will never forget. Yesterday, April twenty-fifth, marked the twenty-fourth anniversary of the murder of Millbrae Police Officer David J. Chacudi. On April twenty-fifth of nineteen ninety-eight, Officer Chacudi responded to assist fellow officers on a fast highway pursuit coming from San Francisco down Highway, Highway one-on-one near Millbrae Avenue off-ramp. Officer Chacudi engaged a heavily armed suspect at the scene and was killed. So yesterday was the twenty-fourth anniversary of the murder of Millbrae Police Officer David J. Chacudi. And it's just something that we recognize and honor his family, friends, and Millbrae community. And we will always remember Officer Chacudi for his heroism and his protection and service that he provided to the city of Millbrae. Lastly, I would like to recognize, I think as the council knows and the community knows, the city has had several several of our employees that have had, had, had children and have been on maternity leave. And we've had some employees that really stepped up. And one employee who is just, I mean, I'll define him as a rock star. He's been incredible. And I wanted to know publicly and provide a commendation, city matters commendation, Alani, if you could bring it up, to Edward, Eduardo Gonzalez. In recognition of his outstanding leadership, commitment, and dedication to the city of Millbrae, his contribution as interim city clerk proved invaluable, not only in the day-to-day operations, but throughout one of the most critical times in the history of Mill, Millbrae, ensuring the adoption of full compliance with state law, informing the five new city council districts. His excellent work is commended and highly appreciated. Eduardo also attended all the city events. As you know, city council, you know, he kept city council meetings running with meeting minutes and just a superior job. And I can't say enough about the great effort and teamwork and camaraderie that Eduardo brings to, to the city and to the office every day. So I highly commend Eduardo on a job well done and his outstanding performance. So thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda, we do have calendar of events on the agenda, reports and bills and claims. Those are our standard items. Then we have approval of meeting minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of February eighth and the special meeting of February fifteenth. There are no reports from any city committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we move to public communication. Public communication is for any member of the public to address the city council. On any item not on the agenda, comments are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is to receive and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Item number six is our monthly update on the recreation center design and construction. Item number seven is a resolution accepting the Millbrae Avenue and Helen Drive traffic calming project as complete and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Item number eight is a resolution awarding the construction contract to DRC and Hardy Construction for the Upper Hillcrest Sub Basin Four Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Item number nine is a professional services agreement with Bellician Associates for the Aurora Seco and Vista Grande Utility Improvement Project and amending CIP funds. This project includes storm, water, sewer, as well as road repair and repaving. Item number nine, or excuse me, item number ten is a resolution of necessity declaring a portion of certain property interest APN zero nine three dash three five two zero two zero as necessary for public purposes and authorizing initiation of commendation proceeding for the acquisition of property rights to extend California Drive and for overhead utilities. The action on this item this evening is simply to vote to continue this item to the May twenty-fourth city council meeting. So that would be the action on this item is to continue the, continue this item to the May twenty-fourth city council meeting. Moving on to public hearing, we do not have any public hearings this evening. Under existing business, we have two items, starting with item number eleven, which item eleven is a discussion regarding two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits and single-family residential zones pursuant to Senate Bill Nine. Item number twelve is to consider directing staff to prepare an amendment to the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit. Hazardous use is classified as biosafety level two, uses in a portion of the transit-oriented development zone, which is known as the TOD Zone, located east of El Camino Real, west of the rail road right of way, and north of Millbrae Avenue. This is within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for SFO safety compatibility zone two. There are no new business items. Then we move on to council comments and adjournment. So, Mayor, that concludes the overview of the agenda this evening.
City Manager and Mayor, if I may, actually, item number twelve has been moved from existing business to new business. I see your hand, Councilmember Snyder. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager forgot one other exciting thing happening on Friday, May thirteenth. The ribbon cutting, the movie, also the return of the plant sale will be up the hill behind the movie screen. Please come on down, all you who have loved buying our succulents. All of this is a fundraiser for the landscaping at the recreation center. So it'll be around the same time as the movie and the ribbon cutting. Come on down, spend money, help Millbrae. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so can we move to approve the minutes? We have the regular minutes, regular meeting minutes of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the special meeting minutes of February fifteenth of two thousand of twenty twenty-two.
Motion second.
Can we have a vote, please? Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Aye.
Mayor's Aliva?
Aye.
Okay. The meeting minutes of February eighth and also special meeting minutes of February fifteen is approved by a vote of five to zero. Perfect. I'll now move to public communication. Anything that is not on the agenda that somebody would like to speak on? I see one hand raised, two hand raised. The first hand is a four oh eight number. Could you please state your name and where you're from?
Good evening. My name is Jim Lawrence. I'm a mayor, member of the city council. Again, my name is Jim Lawrence. I'm Chair of the Board of Fixon Semitale County. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, and our mission is enact a civilian oversight board and inspector general's office for the Semitale County Sheriff's Office. Moreover, we are strongly recommending that the existing board supervisors use their legislative authority via AB eleven eighty-five to install this civilian oversight board for the Semitale County Sheriff's Office. Let me just take a quick moment and put this perspective for you. We live in a democracy. Our elected leaders have checks and balances. The president, as you know, has the Senate, the Congress, Supreme Court, likewise Governor Newsom. Even my local police chief here in Foster City has the city manager and the city council. Our county sheriff does not report to anyone. He has no checks and balances. Yes, he's elected every four years, pursues our president and our governor and our city council members. With installation of this oversight board, we, the general public, will gain transparency into this vital county governmental office for which we, the general public, invest three hundred million dollars annually. But more importantly, to begin to build community trust, those who have given the right to enforce our laws and ensure fair and impartial treatment for all Semitale County residents. It's common sense, good government, strictly responsible to have transparency and accountability for our tax dollars. Again, on behalf of all of us at Fixon Semitale County, we hereby urge you to support and endorse our efforts to get this to the city board of supervisors via legislative action. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Kelly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Michael Kelly, Millbrae citizen. I remain deeply dismayed that our incumbent sheriff, Carlos Bolanos, while running for reelection, is so completely mired in ongoing controversies. Last meeting, I shared how appalling his behavior was when he was caught and detained in a home-based brothel prostitution raid by Las Vegas Police, investigative of the FBI while he was a Semitale County Sheriff employee. I also shared how massively disturbing that under his leadership, Semitale County accounted for more than twenty times the average Bay Area county rate of handing detainees over to ICE for deportation at the end of their detention in twenty twenty and other years of his tenure. Yet Mayor Aliva is endorsing Bolanos to be reelected. Councilmember Fung is fundraising for him. It would be bad enough if these were the only two items, but there are so many more. The Semitale Deputy Sheriff's Association has decided to not endorse him. Our council members are, the deputies aren't, I should say, three of our council members are. It's a massive unspoken statement of disapproval, lack of trust and respect in the rank and file. The officers in the sheriff's department have been working for two years without a contract. There are countless reports of internal harassment, intimidation, and retaliation by him and his administration to anyone who isn't supporting his reelection. This is not rumor. Millbrae Past Police Paul Chief Paul Kunkel, Officer Victor I N J, and others were at my house a few weeks ago, meeting with several dozen voters. And these first responders went on the record, gave permission to use their names and their titles, describing how miserably low the morale is in the department. It's so bad under his leadership. Chief Kunkel described Bolanos's administration as a rolling dumpster fire. The department is down a hundred bodies because they cannot successfully recruit into this toxic work environment. Yet Vice Mayor Gina Papin is still endorsing him and still fundraising for him. Check out police scorecard.org. It's a non-political organization. It ranks the fifty-eight California sheriff departments in California. San Mateo Sheriff has more funding than ninety-six percent of all the other state sheriff departments, yet falls in the middle, number twenty-eight out of fifty-five scored around the effective policing score with an overall score of forty percent. Talk about failed leadership. But I want to be fair. Our city council did authorize and approve a six-figure expenditure to get a sheriff deputy on foot patrol in downtown Millbrae. We need that. We want that. The deputy would be, would be a volunteer but would get paid overtime rates. But no deputy will risk the retaliation of Bolanos for ma- making Millbrae safer because it would make Bolanos's opponent, our chief police, Christina Corpus, look good. When a deputy does step up to volunteer, they get rerouted to court transport service by the Bolanos administration. This makes Mayor Aliva, Councilman Fung, and Vice Mayor Papin complicit in jeopardizing the safety and welfare of Millbrae to suit their political goals for their preferred candidate. Shame on the three of you. I call on you
Thank you, Michael.
to endorse
Thank you, Michael.
support Millbrae's
We will go next to our consent calendar. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items on the consent calendar. We excuse me? Do we have another, do we have another public comment? Nope. I just remind everyone, if you want to speak, please use your raised hand feature on Zoom or file star nine if you're calling by phone. Councilmember Snyder, is your hand up? Are you making a motion for the consent calendar?
I am happy to make a motion for the consent calendar. I do have a comment on two of them, but it's not affecting the vote.
Let's take the comments, please.
Okay, first, I would like to say a big thank you to staff. This is agenda item number six, the rec, six, the recreation center update. I had this issue brought up last, two council meetings ago about the trees. I really want to say thank you, staff, for looking into new trees and for choosing the smaller but fast-growing maple trees. I'm very grateful. You guys all know how much I care about trees. And the other one, agenda item number nine, terrific work, staff. This is a, a problem of a flooding now that we have the new rains and a great opportunity for green infrastructure on this particular project. So I am happy to make a motion and support the motion, but just want to say thank you to both sets of staff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do we have a second? Yes.
Madam Mayor? Is it true that, yeah, I just have a question. Is it item number ten being pulled for, for today? Mr. Tom Williams?
No, that's the action on it, to put it on the next
The second May meeting.
Yes, second, thank you.
Okay, so the action, so the action is to
Put it on the second May meeting.
Yes, vote to continue this item to May twenty-fourth.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I'll be happy to second it.
Thank you. Can we call for the vote, please? Councilmembers Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliver? Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin? Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
The city council approved the consent, I, consent calendar by the vote of five to zero. Perfect. Tonight, we have no public hearing, so we'll move on to existing business. And item number eleven is a discussion regarding two-unit residential developments and urban lot suites, uh, splits in single-family residential zones pursuant to Senate Bill Nine. This is informational only, and I'm sure we have a staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, Community Development Director, for a staff presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Darcy Smith. I'm the City Millbrae Community Development Director. I'll be making the presentation tonight along with one of our consultants. So if the clerk can enable screen sharing, I can bring the presentation up.
I believe you could do that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going the next two items. So you'll see a lot of me tonight. I'm happy to be back before you tonight. So can everyone see this presentation?
Yes.
Yes, great. Okay, so like I mentioned, I'll be making this presentation along with Bruce Brubaker, who's a principal at Placeworks, who I've actually known, I think, since, well, two thousand and five, so a long time. He's a licensed architect. He's also on a planning commission in a Bay Area city, so really familiar with this issue before us tonight. And we'll be talking about the two-unit residential development and urban lot splits in single-family residential zones pursuant to Senate Bill Nine. So this is a, both an informational and an active action item where we'll give you a presentation regarding this SB nine zoning ordinance that we've been working on, and we're seeking guidance on the preparation of that ordinance, which will establish objective standards for these projects, which are two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits. So a quick summary, because this is the fourth time you've had a presentation on this since December. But you might know SB nine went into effect January one, and essentially, although there are many footnotes, allows for the creation of up to four new units on a single-family parcel by ministerial approval in accordance with specified standards and conditions that are in state law. The city can regulate that by objective standards in our ordinance within the limits provided by SB nine. And in the presentation, we'll be clear to try to emphasize what's in SB nine, and we can't change it all, and what we can change, because I think that will really inform your conversation tonight. And again, if we don't have a local ordinance, then SB nine prevails. But you might recall, we, you adopted an urgent But you might recall, we, you adopted an urgency ordinance on December eighth. You directed staff and the city attorney to prepare that urgency ordinance with temporary objective standards and affordability requirements. You met on December sixteenth and adopted the first urgency ordinance with four key objective standards that we discussed in those meetings extensively. And then we came back January twenty-fifth and you approved an extension. That extension is in place now until December tenth, but we're working really hard to get this before you as quickly as possible. So some of the key items in that ordinance that we studied in more detail and we had conversations about and saw it, neighborhood, community input, as Bruce will cover in our slides about community engagement. These stress a variety of topics. The first is around the number of units allowed on each parcel and a specific prohibition on adding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwellings. This is something that the state is researching now and will continue to do more research on this. But our current ordinance caps the number to two units on any lot created by an urban slot split and wouldn't allow essentially up to four units, which would be if someone added on an ADU and a JADU. The city council also imposed an affordability requirement, which requires that if there's an SB nine project that results in more than two SB nine dwellings, then at least one of those SB nine dwellings is required to be affordable. Unit that's deed restricted through a requirement that be a low-income unit that's up to eighty percent of the area median income for fifty-five years. And the council may consider alternatives to that. For example, an affordable in-lu fee could be imposed on projects involving two or three units currently. Last summer, you adopted them for projects with four or more units. There are many cities in the Bay Area that have them for two or three units. It would not be that unusual, but it would require more study as it's a new in-lu fee. And last, the city council adopted setbacks that require any unit constructed to have at least a four-foot rear and side yard setback. Those are maximum set in state law, so for some reason you thought we could maybe go higher. Ten feet, for example, is our current rear yard setback in single-family zones. We can't, the state cap them. But important to note, if we didn't have these in this local ordinance, someone could do zero. So I always like to highlight, you know, what we're doing to, you know, put our foot down and require something. And that here is an example where locally we'll require four feet for the rear and side. That's the maximum we can require. And it's in our ordinance now, and we'd like to recommend that that be continued. So before I turn it over to Bruce, I just want you to know that we haven't had any SB nine project applications. We've had some inquiries, which our assistant planner has fielded. And we've spent a lot of time talking to him about the inquiries. But most of the inquiries, especially those around urban lot splits, have been with outside developers. They're largely speculative. Our residents, and you'll see some more detail when Bruce covers our community engagement, they are really more interested in the ADU option, accessory dwelling unit. They see that as an easier, financially sound option over the SB nine projects. We've also seen an uptick in ADUs. So last year, eighteen permits were issued. And I think that's an example when the city does the hard work to adopt a local ordinance that includes state law, as you did with the ADU ordinance, and then puts our local requirements in place to the extent possible. Again, the residents see that as an easier and financially sound option, and we see a lot of ADUs under construction. And we'll continue to see them. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bruce, and then I'll come back at the end to finish up the presentation.
Thank you, Darcy. Greetings, council members. I want to say that I'm here with my associate, Pranjali Deokul, as well. And it's a pleasure to be here discussing this important issue. I'll preface it by saying that staff and ourselves, consultants, have determined some proposed, uh, proposed standards for the SB nine ordinance that we will present to you tonight for your discussion and consideration. And so after this presentation, you will have discussion to, to move forward with guidance for us on what standards should be part of the ordinance. So we did have a community workshops in February of this year. It was broadcast to community members. We had between ten and twenty community members attend. The workshop, we gathered input. There was a presentation about SB nine, what it is, what it could do. And we had questions and answers. Perhaps the presentation can come back.
Hold on.
And there was general feedback in the presentation or after the presentation during discussion about just the general cost of housing in the Bay Area in Milbury. There was regarding SB nine development, there was a real desire to maintain the high quality of the environment in Milbury, including architecture and building form and inconsistency context with the neighborhood. There was discussion about size of units, and there was discussion about parking requirements. So there were concerns about all of these issues from community members that attended the workshop. Next slide, Darcy. We also prepared a survey. It was an online survey that we gave to the participants of the workshop, but we also made it public and broadcast that the survey was available. So we had thirty-eight respondents to the survey overall, over the two or three weeks that we, we had it available online. It was meant to, to collect and document the community's input on specific objective standards, ideas for requirements, and also some general opinion on housing challenges. Most of the respondents were residents of Milbury. And the summary, maybe a very high-level summary, I know there is a summary in your staff report, but a high-level summary here is generally, the survey respondents preferred to require the one parking space per unit, which is the maximum that is allowed to be required under SB nine. And there are some exceptions to that, as Darcy said, footnotes on SB nine are extensive. But, but the general sense was, please do require the one parking space maximum. There was a preference to also set a maximum size for the, the units, SB nine units, and a preference to follow existing height limits in single-family zones. So a concern about too tall development for SB nine units. Next slide. This is background. This is a map of Milbury, and it is an analysis of all of the single-family residential lots, so RR one lots and RRL lots, large lots, single families in Milbury. And this analysis actually shows, it's a size analysis. So there's ranges of lot sizes that are colored different colors. And generally, the darker colors are smaller lots and the lighter colors are the larger lots. You can see that there, that Milbury has a good number, mostly the middle, middle scale of five thousand to eight thousand square foot lots, which is a medium-sized lot for single-family residential. And it's, it's worth pointing out that it won't be very easy for property owners to develop SB nine projects. In, in most cases, because lots are, will either be rather small to be able to subdivide and still access, or they may be differently shaped, there may be other constraints for development. So it's, it's not, it's not anticipated that very many lots will develop with SB nine. But the ordinance will be there to govern what does happen when, when lots do develop. As we look at the next slide, Darcy, we, we also analyzed lots in, in Milbury for slope, because that could be another constraint for SB nine development in Milbury. And the darker colors here are the, the areas that have steep slopes. So more than thirty degrees slope is the darkest brown color. And other slopes are, are, you know, the darker the color, the steeper the slope. A lot of lots do have or are impacted by slope. And so that will also be a constraint for SB nine development as, as it moves forward. So just wanted to point out that not every lot really can probably develop SB nine projects, but some may be able to. So, next slide. So what are the major policy considerations? As Darcy mentioned, under SB nine, local jurisdictions can implement objective zoning standards as long as they do not, you know, preclude the ability to, to do SB nine development, subdivide a lot and/or develop an additional house on an existing lot. So the urgency ordinance is an example of some objective zoning standards, which is in place in Milbury now. And we have some additional ones that we'll talk about in a moment. The objective standards that we will be recommending are meant to respect the visual and acoustic privacy of primary residences on neighboring lots. Because SB nine does allow some exceptions to local ordinances. For instance, the setback that Darcy mentioned. So the, the, the city may require a ten-foot setback, but under SB nine, the maximum setback would be a four-foot setback from the rear property line. So it's important that the city consider all of the opportunities that SB nine provides for setting some objective standards. And that's what we're talking about tonight. The review, there's a reminder, review of SB nine projects is ministerial, so they will not go to planning commissioner or council. There is no, there can be no requirement for design review process or sequel review or any kind of planning application other than ministerial is allowed under state law. Next slide. So now, here is the meat of the presentation tonight. What we wanted to talk about and to bring to your consideration are some proposed standards that you should consider, discuss, and give us feedback on. One is maximum dwelling size. Staff recommendation is for the maximum size to be no greater than eight hundred square feet. And this is the minute, the, the minimum that SB nine requires. So SB nine requires all jurisdictions to allow at least eight hundred square foot residential development. And Bud Milbury does have the opportunity to set that as a maximum. There could be also a front yard setback standard. SB nine is silent about that. So this is an opportunity to require a setback that would match other residential setbacks in your, in your residential zones, which is twenty feet. Next slide. Building height standards would be recommended to be a maximum height of sixteen feet, no more than one story, to ensure that SB nine development is in keeping with residential development and is not, you know, degrading shade or sunlight and privacy. There is also a proposed ordinance to prohibit roof decks. And then on lot frontage width and configuration for urban lot splits. So this is if you have an existing lot and you want to split it into two. There is a proposed, uh, proposed standard to make a minimum twenty-five-foot lot frontage along a public street as a minimum, so that you wouldn't get extremely narrow lots in a neighborhood of, of homes that have, you know, the average lot in Milbury is above fifty feet wide. Another standard is that both new parcels after the subdivision should be at least twelve hundred square feet, which SB nine allows, that that is a minimum. And then another standard, no more than two parcels of approximately equal lot area shall be permitted. Neither parcel exceeding sixty percent of the lot area. So clearly, this is intended to prevent, you know, a major piece of the lot being retained and then a very small part made into an SB nine development. So they must be approximately equal under the standard. And then the last standard here is to preclude, do not permit flag lots. And flag lots are lots that have a, a large area behind with a narrow extension out to a street right-of-way that is the flagpole of the flag lot. And so the city is proposing here to prohibit the development of flag lots or any, any lot less than twenty-five feet wide extending to the street right-of-way. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of these, should you have them. And Darcy can, can help answer these as well. Other standards that are proposed are landscaping requirements. So ensuring that sixty percent of the front yard must be landscaped and may not be paved. And in, in terms of parking, to require the minimum, which is one covered space per unit. Now, there's a caveat there because there are some areas within the city where, where the city cannot require even one space per unit because it's close to transit or either a transit station or a transit-rich corridor, of which El Comino Real is one. So within a half-mile distance of transit, the city may not require one space per unit. But in other areas outside of that, the city may require one space per unit, should it desire to. And so the recommendation is to, yes, set that requirement of one, one space per unit and also making the unit covered. So that is the prerogative of the city as well, to ensure that the parking space that is required is covered. Another standard is to prohibit parking located in the front yard setback, so that you would not have surface parking along the street. It would need to be set back behind that twenty-foot setback. And then that there should be additional standards for vehicular access. Driveway widths, controlling the driveway width, not having it be too narrow or too wide. And then ensuring that it's safe and adequate access to garages. Next slide. Some other standards include design standards. And we are not proposing specific standards to you tonight, but we would like to hear from you if these standards make sense. But all of these standards that I'm talking about in this slide are kind of additional standards that we are considering as we're developing the ordinance. The previous standards that we mentioned kind of rose to the higher level of discussion at council. These other standards, we will be working on, and we will bring back to council when the ordinance comes back for approval. But, and, but we wanted to mention that we will be looking at these standards as we're developing the ordinance. So one is objective design standards, things like window trim, colors, roof design. We will be looking at whether, oh, the, the owner occupancy affidavit is one that SB nine allows, and it's a, it's a no-brainer. So we will be including the owner occupancy affidavit in the ordinance. It is an affidavit, the owner signs, that says that they are living on-site. If they are to do an urban lot split, this is to prevent developers to move in, acquire lots and start developing SB nine. So this is like, SB nine developers must be owners of the subject property and must live on the property. The short-term residential rental prohibition, again, SB nine mandates this, and the city will reinforce it, that units may not be used for short-term rentals, so less than thirty-day rentals. And then there is other standards regarding demolition that you cannot demolish more than twenty-five percent. That you cannot demolish more than twenty five percent of an existing house. Unless that house has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years, that's an SB nine. Rule and the city must, you know, respect that rule, it's meant to. Prohibit owners from kicking tenants out and redeveloping. And so it makes sense and it will be a part of the the ordinance moving forward and it is required to be part of the ordinance. Next slide.
Over here, yeah, so that was again a an overview of what we studied and I want to emphasize that. We worked very closely with placeworks, we have a team here in planning division led by Rosca Mata, the planning manager. And our assistant planner, Christian, and they're the ones sort of on the ground, talking to the members of the community and the. Fielding all the inquiries, so we tried to take what was in state law and I would just say make it local, make it reflect Millbury's culture and values and. Quality of our residential neighborhoods. So we're looking for your feedback tonight and then we'll finalize the ordinance and bring it to three more meetings, the planning commission. Will hold a public hearing because it's a zoning code amendment and so they'll hold a public hearing and then. Make a recommendation to you ultimately and that will return to you. For public hearing for introduction and then for adoption and if we can get good clear feedback tonight, then I think we can have it. Done by the end of the summer. Taking into account your recess in August, but we're on track, we're making a lot of headway and we've also done a lot of research, I should add around other cities and what counties and what they're doing. It's been really informative, we've done a lot of good research. So with that, we're looking for guidance on. The preparation of this ordinance for objective standards and I. I added the four major policy consideration topics here that Bruce covered and we're happy to answer any questions as to, you know, what exactly we. We thought about when we came up with these, so the maximum dwelling size, eight hundred square feet, the front yard setback twenty feet, which matches what we have in the R one zone. And you know, there's sort of a lot of guidance here to sort of take what works in the R one zone and it's for example, a front yard setback. Wouldn't want to reduce it, we'd want to build on what's an established pattern in our neighborhoods. The building height that took into consideration that again, the state imposes four foot. Maximum setbacks for side and rear, so you've got units closer to people's backyards, try to provide some acoustical visual privacy. Reducing the building height and allowing roof decks, it would be closer to the property line. And then the lot width and configuration. And a lot of that comes from state law, but there's not a predominant pattern in Milbury of flag lots and we don't want to perpetrate that. We want lot configurations that are in keeping with most of our predominant patterns in our neighborhoods while not unduly. Limiting development, parking, we talked about again, if the state allows us to require one. Onsite parking stall, we should take that and do it in more consistent with what we require. Currently for single family homes and then landscaping requirements, it's really important to address. Some of the things we've talked about tonight and other items, stormwater retention onsite minimizing paving. And be as sustainable as possible, so that summarizes our staff report, happy to answer any questions you have and accept public comments on this.
So thorough, thank you so much and thank you for making it easy to understand was, I think the first time I heard it, it was so overwhelming. But it, I don't know if we've heard it many times, but it seemed very concise to me tonight, so thank you. Councilmember Snyder, should we, should we do public comment for it or council comments?
Whichever you prefer.
The public comment might not be a bad idea.
I I could use the time to digest if you don't mind. Yes.
Sure.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
Hey Mayor, I just want to state for the record that we did receive a public comment today by. Our website and we did forward to city council today.
Thank you, Elaine. I do not see any. Public comment. I'm surprised. All right, councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor, couple of these are dumb questions and and then Darcy, right at the end, you you got to it. You mentioned at the very end about keeping water onsite and I think. I don't remember, from our previous SD nines, we hadn't had the flood situation that has now become a big reality for Milbury. And keep it from all of us, boy, I can't speak tonight, sorry, all of us to do our our own part in keeping rainwater on our property. But you said that we now have those or you're going to be working on those in the the objective guidelines?
Well, thank you. For that question, there's no dumb questions here because the thing with new state laws is that we're all sitting around trying to figure out what they mean and and what we can do locally, so. Any questions and great questions, so we would proffer that we continue the current single family. Max minimum of sixty percent landscaping in the front yard. And other standards to minimize paving such as minimum and maximum driveway widths. And what people typically do in the front yards is, as you know, put in. Landscaping and other ways to absorb the stormwater, rainwater onsite infiltration and you've taken other actions. For example, related to the urgency ordinance for artificial turf that will inform our work there and we're working on that separately. But those we have, we have examined under this, you know, this new mandate of have objective standards in place and have design standards in place and we're working hard on those and we'll bring them back to you. Soon and those would apply to single family zones in the city as well, and so we can make sure that we cross reference those that they would be applicable to SB nine projects. And make sure, you know, as long as we have an objective standards, it can apply to this. And there may be other agencies, I should mention, or other things in the building code that obviously address other things like stormwater runoff as well, and again, those laws, to the extent they're adopted and in effect and objective standards prevail too.
Yeah, that's kind of my biggest concern because we're taking a lot of soil. Out of, or we could in theory be taking soil out of its responsibility of absorbing rainwater. The you talked about front yards, if you use my house as example, we're almost up at the front of the house up by the street, most of the yard is in the backyard about ninety by ninety feet. So if somebody built a an eight hundred foot building back there. And the water drained into my neighbor behind, would we be able to protect the neighbor behind?
Well, it really depends.
Or down slope, down slope.
A lot of it's on the slopes, which is why we really wanted to show you that map that shows how a lot of these parcels, why you look at them and you think, oh, they're they're really big, sure, they could be subdivided, then you realize. Steep slopes, especially on the rear half, because the pattern was to grade a flat. You know, flat building pad in the front and then it might drop off. But we would, you know, there are requirements in the building code that address drainage and and require that to be contained onsite and the city has. You know, other ways to address that. But what we find is that sometimes those backyards already are covered in some impervious surface, for example, someone might have a, you know. A covered patio, paved patio or might have a shed in the backyard, so what we've seen through the ADUs is that sometimes there's not. You know, the actual level of impervious surface in the backyard remains about the same. That's another reason why we wanted to look at the unit size of eight hundred square feet, because again, if you're looking at really shallow setbacks. And backyards that are could could be more vegetative in nature, we didn't want to. Take up too much of that for a unit as well, if that makes sense.
We couldn't, for example, require cisterns for rainwater.
Well, we'll look into it, I mean, placeworks does a lot of work around sustainability codes. We'll look at that for sure.
I I would be interested in seeing that, my other question, I see Ruben or Councilman Holibur's here. If you use the block from Milbury Avenue going towards Hillcrest, what the zero to one hundred blocks, there are a lot of, they're not zoned R one, they're duplexes. And and many of them, not all, but many of them have already cemented in or asphalted in most of their front yards. And they're set farther back from the street than say the houses in the two hundred, three hundred and four hundred blocks. What can a duplex do with this, can it put on? I I haven't been to the backyard, so I don't know if there are big backyards in them, I think there are not if I Google mapped it, but it seems to me that if they're going to add an ADU, the ADU would be in the front yard. And I know that was our concern about the ADU law that it it could go in the front or in the back. So if you look at Taylor Boulevard, many of the homes have very large front yards, small backyards, big front yards and they could plop an ADU down, could they do the same thing under SD nine?
Well, that's a good question, I'm not sure we've analyzed that potential. Because I can tell you to be an SB nine project, it can't be duplex zoning, it's only single family.
Only for that, okay.
Yeah, so for that R two, let's set that aside and most of our single family properties, you know, were established with that twenty foot front yard setback. We want to maintain that, right, and so it would be very unlikely that someone would come in and build in the front.
I'm I'm glad to hear that, my last question, you talked about sixteen feet tall, one story, are we talking about a peaked roof to hit sixteen feet?
Yeah, so what we don't want to do is have a regulation that discourages good compatible architecture, right, and some. Homes in Milbury have pitched roofs, right, and they might be a steep pitch. One of the objective standards around roof pitches that we proffered in the staff report, we didn't talk about it much. Again, an objective standard would be to require the roof pitch for this new unit to match that of the existing dwelling, so. You know, when architectures talk about roof pitches, just geometry, right, four to twelve pitch or five and twelve pitch, and so we would know that information for the existing house and we could require that it be matched. For the SB nine unit or let's say they're demolishing that existing house or there's no existing house, this is a vacant lot, for example, then they might, we could require them to match the average roof. Pitch of dwelling units on adjoining lots, but what we thought, sometimes these units have to be raised a little bit for building code insulation, for example, get them off the. You know, off of a slab and so sometimes you have a nice porch and so you're raising it up and so we also want to encourage, you know, livable homes. To that extent, so we thought sixteen feet was a good measurement. And it's been used in other cities, but we thought one one story was just really important around privacy. Because again, we do designer view, we cannot do designer view for second stories, which you know, the planning commission, the planning division process a lot of designer view for second stories and we. Analyze window placements and all sorts of design features to to address neighborhood compatibility and neighborhood. Privacy and we can't do that here and so we just thought, well, then look at a one story option.
Very good, to me, it's also loss of sunlight and however, someone has designed their backyard, they may be growing food and suddenly they don't get any sun anymore, so that would be my concern. I think you asked, so just if you haven't, here's my opinion, I would like any new structures built to match the existing architecture. And not be something different and I know we use the word demolition, I would prefer. That any project under here be deconstructed, in which case they're saving some of the building materials that could be used in the new structure, which is a climate change embodied energy issue. But it also gives them some of the same features, some of the same materials, that's that aspect that a lot of people don't like about historic preservation designation. That you have to use similar, the same and or similar building materials when you're doing a remodel, but I I would like each of our neighborhoods to maintain. The styles that they were designed by the originals. Thank you. And and good presentation to you both, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Holibur.
Thank you and very good presentation, very thorough. Good work on this, one thing I I don't think, may have missed it, but I don't think it was mentioned in the presentation was. The affordability requirement. But the recommendation is to keep that at this point.
Oh, we did receive some feedback in the community meeting, if you look at. The summary and the the notes, so there was some feedback there and we did ask a survey question, although it was somewhat inconclusive. But we have not received explicit feedback in writing from anyone examining. Doing a project that it was a barrier, I would just proffer that you could consider alternatives should you wish to. And I think you were the one.
Yeah, I was just referring to the presentation.
Yeah.
Shown, I don't think.
It was mentioned under the urgency ordinance slide, so everything in the urgency ordinance, we would expect to continue in the regular ordinance unless we hear otherwise.
Yeah, I I think it is important to keep that requirement, especially with. You know, the new Rena cycle coming up, the majority of. The housing that we're asked to approve, Milbury is in the below market rate categories, so that will be the big challenge, most of the. Market rate, so I'll see that continue, I think you just briefly went over this with councilmember Schneider, but the question about. Building height. A limit of sixteen feet, which is basically one story. So isn't there some type of a trade off though, that if you limit it to one story, they are likely to take up more. Square footage of the lot. Have less open space.
Yeah, I think that's true, especially with bigger units, so I would couple this with your thinking on the size of the unit, because at eight hundred square feet, the economy of scale there is to keep it one story. If for some reason you you were inclined to have a larger unit size, like twelve hundred square feet or probably, probably it's tipping point. More like sixteen hundred square feet, because that it's expensive to build a second story, you have to engineer the walls differently, have to add stairs which take up space. So, you know, it's sort of the tipping point is more of a sixteen hundred square foot, two thousand square foot unit where a two story unit makes sense, now, there are some. Really great design, small homes that are two stories or they might do a sleeping loft or something, but it's not what we typically would see. And we would just counter that by the 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 concern about privacy, sunlight.
But potentially, could there be, you know, a two unit. Building on one of these divided lots where, you know, the ground floor is one unit, the second floor is a second unit potentially?
You could, yeah, probably less rare, because I think what this was really designed is to keep that front house, I mean, there are again, some provisions in state law around demolition that Bruce highlighted. But what 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 we've heard from peer cities is that a lot of. A lot of times they're keeping the existing house and they're building in the rear. And so it would just be more atypical, if we had a lot of vacant lots, which we we just don't hear, we really rare to have a vacant lot laying around. That's single families owned, then that might happen, but. It would be more rare, given.
Demolition cost is somewhat.
Yes, yes, that too, I mean, you know, the market value of homes here, it's it's would be challenging to demolish that and then build.
And then in terms of the prohibition on flag lots. What was the, I mean, I don't have a particularly strong opinion on that, but what what's the rationale for that?
Right now was just neighborhood compatibility, so there there are some in the city, they're not, they're not that common.
Very few, very few.
Yeah, and they tend to not have a presence on the street, they tend to, you know, you just see the driveway, which is often gated. So we thought it wasn't consistent with our lot typology, you know, we would prefer if someone were to do a subdivision to have. Lot front edge, to have that street presence and to be as compatible as possible with the neighborhoods. We also just thought it wouldn't be a constraint in the sense that we don't have a lot of big lots. That could accommodate that, because again, so many of our big lots, as you saw, have steep slopes in the rear, so it's just not gonna, they can think, it's gonna be really tough to grade that, put in a driveway. Access.
Yeah, I mean, I I I understand that, I I think. You know, I I would be open to allowing flag lots on the ordinance and. Little strong opinion, but in a sense, that could be less, you know, imposing or less. Dense than having two smaller houses. Kind of crammed in there on what would normally be one. Single family lot, if the other one is kind of in the back out of sight, out of mind. And then in terms of parking, yeah, do support at least one parking space per unit. In the locations where that's allowed. What's the rationale for covered versus uncovered, it's on the survey, I mean, the survey is only a very small sample size, but there didn't seem to be a strong preference.
Yeah, our recommendation was to have it be covered, again, more compatible with. Typical, single family requirements. And, you know, just. Better design, integrate with the house, that won't count against the eight hundred square feet, which I think might be an incentive for someone maybe coming in with a two car garage if they wanted it. But, you know, not everyone uses their garage, so sometimes. But, you know, not everyone uses their garage, so sometimes uncovered is better. But we also are sensitive to too much paving. So we landed on keep it consistent with what our single family home requirement is, because again, that's more compatible with the neighborhood. And we really like, we'd really like it then today, someone to drive by and think, oh, that's, you know, that's not SB nine unit, that's just a single family home in a single family neighborhood. So that's what we were thinking. If it would be better designed with the garage.
And SB nine is silent on whether the parking is supposed to be covered or uncovered.
It's silent. We can set an objective standard, especially if it's consistent with what we require for single family homes.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember, oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Puppin?
I think you got him there. Wow, lots of things announced here. I have to agree with making sure we're not paving over everything.
Does everybody hear Gina's raspy?
Very faint.
I can't even turn up any better.
No, you sound, you sound hoarse.
I sound hoarse?
Yeah.
Get a microphone. Just a second.
It's getting better.
It's better, okay.
No.
Let me plug for a minute. Can you go on?
Yeah, let's have her log back in. Councilmember Fung, did you have any questions before we wait for Gina, while we wait for Gina?
Just some preliminary. So is it true that Darcy, that there is so far no SB nine application in our city?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's been enacted since January first, almost five months now? Right? So has there been any serious inquiry leads to perhaps an imminent application at all?
No.
None?
No.
Is it also true that, you know, in order to take advantage of SB nine, there is a homeowner occupancy covenant associated with it? For the urban lot split?
Yeah, that comes, if they propose the project, then they must indicate by affidavit, affidavit, sorry, that's a mouthful, their intention to reside in one of the units built on either parcel for at least three years.
Okay, so there is a homeownership, homeownership affidavit that we need to fill out to declare their intent to use it as a pri, at least one of the units, as primary residence for no less than three years after the urban lot split is completed. Okay, so that's sort of how deters speculative activities as part of using SB nine. And as a result, we have not seen a single application, have not seen a single, a serious inquiry that leads to an imminent application. That's what I'm hearing from you.
That's correct. And as I mentioned in the presentation, most of our residents typically see the ADU option as an easier, more, you know, more sound option. These, the, the law is very similar with some, you know, caveats. But the ADUs are booming in our city, eighteen permits issued last year, and lots of interest there.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if we were to do anything, my preference would be to ensure that the ordinance will help preserve the current neighborhood characteristic. So that, in, in, in sort of a layman term, to make sure that if anyone were to take advantage of the SB nine application, that they would develop these properties in such a way that almost indistinguishable to a single family home. Right? Regardless of the density. Because some of the other concerns, like, you know, speculative usage of it, you know, and driving up cost of housing, that that's sort of been taken care of by the owner occupancy affidavit. And simply because of the fact that it's quite economically challenged to buy a tear down and tearing it up and trying to build, you know, two or four units using SB nine, at least in our single family district here in Millbrae, given the cost of housing. So, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Gina, back on.
Better?
I think, Mike, yeah, you are better.
Okay, we'll try. No really.
It's perfect.
Much better.
All right. So sorry, I missed something. My Zoom went out. It's really weird. Okay, so please, I agree with, we have to be very careful not paving over everything here. I'm kind of open as far as whether the garage area needs to be covered or not. I see what do, and it's, it's still going out, huh?
No, you're good. You're good.
I don't know, the computer seems to be circling there. Okay, I could keep trying this here. Okay. So lots of different things to implement here. And whatever we do, we can modify later, right? I mean, this is like a beginning process if something's not, is that?
We go. We, we'd love to get enough feedback so we can finalize the ordinance to bring it to Planning Commission. Then it comes to you for introduction, and you can certainly change things there, but that would delay the process a little bit. I think we're hoping to get enough feedback so we can finalize, you know, get a final draft to Planning Commission.
I think I'm a little unclear why it even has to go back to in commission.
It never went to Planning Commission. And it's a zoning ordinance. So under the government code, the Planning Commission reviews and makes recommendations to you as the legislative body for zoning code amendments.
Interesting, okay. Well, I definitely agree that we have to start out with some sort of parking requirement. I've seen what's happened in many other cities. And it's, I mean, the streets almost become impossible to accommodate. Where, if you, if you've been to Daly City lately, literally, you have to, you're, the people you're going to visit have to reserve the driveway just so you can park somewhere. So I think it's a good starting point here to have at least one spot for whatever development happens here. We don't have any tending, so that's point of interest for anybody who's coming in late. And I'm sorry, I missed some of my colleagues' comments here. But what did you say as to the, I agree, I mean, we should have some commonality in the setbacks. So I think that is extremely important here, because you don't want it staggered so much. I think staff did a lot of intense work here, and I greatly appreciate that. So I think that's about it as far as my guidance, because I think staff really is doing the best they can here. And we'll, we'll see what happens. So I don't have that much. Thank you.
The four, the four foot setback is mandated, is that correct? That's state statute from SB nine?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we touched on, I mean, I, I don't have any other comments either. I feel like everybody touched on everything, but mostly staff, so thank you. Councilmember Schad, use your hand up again?
It is. I forgot one last thing. Darcy, you had mentioned, so all of these projects are ministerial. They will not go to Planning Commission. They will not go to us. And the city cannot notice the neighbors when this is happening? Or can we do our own thing? You know, even if it's an ADU, it's just a way to keep neighbors talking to each other, speaking with each other. If somebody comes and puts an ADU, if I'm to do one in my backyard, I would like to reach out to all of my neighbors, not just the ones next door, the ones catty corner and back, and reach out and let them know that I'm doing this, because I want to be able to talk to my neighbors after I do this. So what can we do to try to keep a happy neighborhood if we can't even let them know that an ADU may be showing up in their next, next door?
Research whether we could require notification, or the city could do that. It's just, we could, all we can do is notice them. They don't have the right to participate, for example, in a public meeting, because a ministerial permit process, as we described, doesn't involve a public meeting before a public body like the Plan Commission or Council, or an administrative here officer like the director. But we'll research whether we could do some sort of notification, just as a pushing the information out.
I would like to see that. And I know we used to use, what, three hundred feet? And I can tell you from a neighbor who went through a remodel, who then actually was kind of scary, because the county sheriff's department had given him his guns back. But he and his wife screamed at me why we even came and commented, and we supported his project. So neighbors can do things, and it can create some pretty scary situations on that. And offline, I'm happy to go into more detail. But, you know, let's try to make our neighbors all like each other as much as possible. Thank you.
But yet pulling out a permit is public record. So if anybody has any, any, if anybody wants to know what their neighbor's doing, they can go online and see what permits they pulled.
I, I hear you, Mayor, but by then that's too late. And if they build something that theoretically, hypothetically, is blocking, is right, I know we're gonna pick, make sure that windows don't happen, but a window right into my swimming pool, or a window right into my bathroom, or the, what I've heard from some people, are windows right into their children's bedrooms.
Let's stay on course here, because remember, this is not, this is not anything that they will have opportunity to rebuttal or to speak on. So we're going.
Could, could we at least encourage someone wanting to do this to speak to their neighbors?
There's no reason why we couldn't, but I just want to make it perfectly clear, by noticing somebody, that's great. I think it's, it's cordial, and it's nice, and it's very kind. But it's public record, too. If somebody's doing work, you can look to see what permits they pulled out. And in this case, SB nine does not allow for us to have a process by which we notice the neighbors and there's hearings.
I, I, I hear you, and I agree. Although if we collected the number of neighbors upset about something and sent it to Sacramento, maybe they might listen to us on another way to get what they want, but to not to do it this way. But I hear you.
Yeah, and, and we have absolutely zero applications on this. Councilmember Holber?
Yes, I was gonna say that the notification, you know, if that's legal, is, I think, a good idea, even if there isn't going to be a public hearing. Because I think that is how, you know, for example, the owner occupancy requirement, or, you know, the prohibition on short term rentals would probably be enforced, probably by the neighbors, you know, keeping an eye out as to who's there, who's coming in, is the owner ever there or not? Otherwise, I don't think there's really any way to enforce that. So I kind of like the notification idea.
Darcy, I just had a thought that we are planning to do a checklist as part of the ordinance. And the checklist could have an item that says something about notification, you know, required, you know, notification of neighbor, immediate neighbors, or something like that. So seems like there could be a mechanism there.
Do we have any other comments? Staff, do you have enough to go forward with what we've given you? Yeah, there is a lot of great feedback. Yeah. I mean, generally, it sounds like what we proffered as our recommendations were supported. We'll examine notification, systems, deconstruction versus demo. We'll beef up objective design standards with intention of matching existing architecture of existing main unit for neighborhood compatibility. And we'll march forward to the planning.
There was also an item about deconstructing structures.
Yeah. We'll come back to you as fast as we can. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce and team. Great work.
Thank you all. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you. Let me pull up my, get back to the agenda here. Oh, we have our last item here, new business. And it's item number twelve, considering directing staff to prepare an amendment to the Millbrae Station area specific plan to allow, with a conditional use permit, house orders uses classified as biosafety level two uses as a portion of the transit oriented development zone located east of the El Camino, west of the railroad, and north of Millbrae Avenue, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for SFO safety compatibility zone two. This takes action, and I'm sure we have a report. Or, yes, report. Thanks. Yeah, I'm back. I don't know, the city manager wants to do an intro, but I'll give him a little break. I'll introduce myself. Good evening. Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Darcy Smith, the City Millbrae Community Development Director. I'll be taking the solo tonight, but I have a great team. Roscoe Mata, planning manager, and Nestor Guevara, our associate planner, who've worked on this with me and are excited to present this for you tonight. So it's a mouthful, but this is a, this is an item for you to discuss and provide direction on the preparation of an amendment to the Millbrae Stationary specific plan. It would be a focused amendment that I actually prepared and can show you tonight, just so you know exactly what we're talking about, should you wish to march forward with this. And it would allow, with a use permit, these biosafety level two uses, which I'll refresh your memory about, because I, I love science, find these really interesting, in a portion of the TOD zone that I'll also show you on a fancy map. That's east of El Camino, west of the railway, north of Millbrae Avenue. And it's really, the real important thing here to talk about is this comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan. We talked about it earlier tonight. ALUCP. I know you don't like acronyms. You don't like it when we use them, but this is, my presentation would be twice as long as if I didn't use a few key acronyms. So that's the ALUCP. And we'll talk a little bit more about what exactly that safety compatibility zone means, because that's really the linchpin here. This was requested to be placed on the agenda tonight for discussion and direction by the city's MSASP Westside Development Subcommittee, originated out of discussions with property owners, including what we recently released was our RFP in March for the development of a hotel mixed use project on city on lands adjacent to the station. So quick background here, you know, our Millbrae Stationary specific plan shown here around our intermodal station, it was actually first adopted in the nineties. And then there was a major overhaul that Placeworks, who you just saw tonight, did in 2016, guides future development, including public improvements in this area, and with the mix of land uses to support the station. And again, this entire plan area is located within that planning area defined in the ALUCP for SFO with those zones. The ALUCP also regulates noise, noise contours, and also regulates the land uses. So you might recall, this came before you back in 2021 for a different area. So we're gonna want to emphasize what you did in the past before we talk about what you could do in the future. Refresh everyone's memory. So in 2021, you adopted amendments very similar to these, and the overrides. That's a short term, but I want to delve into that in a little more detail, because what that means exactly. The amendments that you approved conditionally permit various life science uses in the TOD zone. So that was already approved. This override is very specific. It allows the city to permit hazardous uses up to biosafety level two in the TOD zone. And the override that you approved, those resolutions that you adopted, only allow it south of Millbrae Avenue, east of the tracks, and west of Rollins Road, in that safety zone two. You can see the line there in blue. And there's other areas, just the south, there's safety zone three. These uses are allowed, these biosafety level two uses are allowed. So you made the override findings, and I just want to emphasize, so, you know, what does that really mean? Implications of the override, this involves some legalese, so I'll just try to simplify it. But it basically means that SFO is immune from. But it basically means that SFO is immune from liability for damages that would result directly or indirectly from that city decision to override that airport land use compatibility plan. This is all in the Public Utilities Code. So the city has and will continue to require as a condition of approval on any development project, the builds takes advantage of this override will require an recordation of an indemnification agreement that provides for the applicant to indemnify the city for claims that would be caused directly by aircraft hazards that may result in the release of bio safety level two materials. Very rare, but that's how we protect the city's interests through this action. So you adopted those resolutions in the past and what this accomplished is increased flexibility for the city to allow these life science uses like the one you see here that I'm pleased as punch announces under construction. So next time you go to In-N-Out, get your burger and shake, look across the street and know that that's an exciting thing coming out of the ground right there. It allows cities, our city to incentivize and attract premier tenants, premier developers and have economic development, especially coming up of the pandemic. We've seen a boom in demand for life science. It's spreading outside of South City to neighboring communities and we're going to take advantage of that because they design and build really high quality office space. So what you see here is the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences with 570,000 square feet approved in 2021, under construction. It's a great campus and we're also processing the Longfellow Life Science Project on the old mini storage site with 263,000 square feet. And they're really excited to be in Millbury and they're really excited to be near transit because they are, they really want their users to get on transit. Take advantage of our station. So bio safety level two, I showed you the slide before, so you know, on the scale, it is not the most hazardous. It's not as crazy as Ebola or the plague. It's dealing with indigenous moderate risk agents that are already present in the community influenza, HIV, Lyme, salmonella, coronaviruses, et cetera. So these are very safe labs that are also heavily regulated. This amendment that we're talking about tonight and want your feedback on would do similar to what we did in the past. So it would allow hazardous uses classified the same bio safety level two or BSL two in the TOD zone that you see here. You have an approved project here, Sarah Station. This would not change that station, that, that project, which has a development agreement at this point in time. I would have to go through a separate process in the future. But for projects that don't have development agreements, including the city owned property, it would give them flexibility should anyone want to take advantage of that to do life science uses with bio safety level two uses. So you can see this exact area here. We didn't want to box ourselves into a corner again because this has been fun, but the second, third time is this some extra work? So I drew the line myself and I included all of the TOD on purpose because I just thought good to have flexibility. It goes, it goes through, the projects go through a process that come before you. And so you have, you're just giving yourselves flexibility. So this is the actual amendment you can see is pretty simple. I, it, it clarifies that in the actual land use on the left that we would allow life science labs and office uses. Again, it's not, it's not 100% lab space. There's a lot of office space in there. Too, which is great because it gives us a lot of employees who then work and shop and spend their money in Millbury and use our intermodal station. So it's limited to those TOD zones that we just described. I showed you on the map and then on the right, we're making little amendments to footnotes describing the resolution, should you adopt it for the override, because again, you're overriding what was previously approved by the Airport Land Use Compatibility or Airport Land Use Commission and Committee. And then again, we're describing the footnote six where those life science uses are allowed. So this is the amendment. Again, I wanted to get it out and show it to you so you know exactly what we're talking about. And it's a long process. So five more meetings if we, if you want to do this and we have to go to the planning commission because it is an amendment to an adopted specific plan, which is part of the zoning code and general plan. Step two, there, it goes before the Airport Land Use Committee meeting. And they review and make a recommendation to the Airport Land Use Commission on consistency with the amendment with that SFO Airport Land Use Plan. Then it goes before the Airport Land Use Commission that, as you know, is the CCG or of directors. They review and make a recommendation regarding the consistency. Last time we did this, they said it was inconsistent because it's inconsistent with their plan because there's plan in this safety zone to explicitly prohibits these hazardous uses. So I think we know what to expect. They're not amending the plan anytime soon, unfortunately. So should this happen as we predict and has to go to two more public hearings before the city council. The first is where you consider adopting a resolution, making draft findings, declaring the intent to consider that override. And we provide noticed reviewing agencies such as the Caltrans Aeronautical Division, MSFO. Then we come back for you, the final step at the end for a very long process is for you to consider adopting that final resolution overriding the determination of inconsistency and the text amendment to the MSASP, which thankfully is adopted by resolution, not ordinance. So this we predict will take five months. You might say, phew, really? That's just way too long. Can't be two months, please. The Airport Land Use Committee and Commission process, they have a maximum of 60 days. I think, you know, they only meet once a month. And it's hard to have special meetings with such large bodies. So it just depends on timing, but that can take two, two full months. And then the, once you declare your intent to override, there's a 45 day agency review period. So those combined really make it hard to squeeze any time off. But that said, five months, we could get it done by the end of the year. So our request for you for tonight's action, the staff request is to discuss and provide direction on the preparation of this amendment, which you saw to the specific plan to allow hazardous uses classified as bio safety level two. And again, it's limited just to that zone here you see. It's east of El Camino, west of the railway, north of Millbury Avenue, within that safety compatibility zone too. And you can see from the left-hand corner where that zone is, the entire areas within it. But these are further away from the runways than, for example, the sites that we, we reviewed previously. Depending on where exactly it lands, which will come to you in the future. So that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions. My Connor also worked with us on this and City Manager Williams, happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Papin, Vice Mayor Papin.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. New microphone. So yeah, I'd like to move approval of this. We know they're going to say no. As we pass it along, can we also request that the airport land use update their plans sooner rather than later because they're going to get a lot of these. That's all I have. Discussion keeps going. I'll move approval whenever you're ready.
We might want to ask the public if they have any comments too. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, if you could bring back the slide that showed El Camino, Real, Millbury Avenue and the zone that you want to make biotech or allow biotech. My question is, so it could include Sarah Station, if Sarah Station and we agreed to break that developer agreement and it's right next to homes. Why are we not including RMU as also biotech at this time, just so we get it done ahead of time? I had thought maybe it's because it's next to residential units, but it's no different than Hemlock.
So that area is preferred for residential. That's what the RMU stands for residential. And we, you know, we want to be protective of our sites that we think are the best for housing because some of them we counted for sites in our last regional housing allocation cycle in our housing element. And we, you know, we think these uses are better closer to the station. So I just would say that's probably drifting a little too much. And the TOD zone is meant to be the most transit supportive, you know, have office and a mixture of uses. Whereas the RMU zone is more resident, residential heavy, and we'd really just like to preserve those sites for residential.
I, I think that's a good response that helps with that lovely letter we got from YIMBY and Green Belt Alliance. And we can talk about that at another time. The Alexandria has been marvelous in adding in a lot of green building examples because we are on the Pacific Flyway. We, we do have some unique situations. We couldn't, because of the TOD, ask Gateway to do it for the laws at the time. We couldn't ask them to put in solar. We couldn't ask them to, we couldn't ask the gas station, the Chevron gas station to put in solar panels to run the EV charging stations. Can we do that now in this new area? Can we get bird friendly windows? Can we get green roofs, cool roofs? All of that done with this or is this simply zoning and we allow a use?
So this is simply zoning at this stage of the conversation. We can certainly, should we get like a life science project in or another project? That's when we would ask those questions. And I think some of the barriers to solar, for example, at Gateway was the airport height limits. But the good news is, as you get further away from the airport, they go up. So I think some of these sites go up to like 121 feet. So that could accommodate solar on the roof, whereas other sites had barriers. And the glass, we were very successful in having conversations about glass, about, you know, really high quality building design features with the life science developers because they really want to attract great tenants. And so they really want to invest a lot in their properties, you know, just drive, drive out to South City, South San Francisco, and you'll just see really well maintained, high quality buildings and, and that's just who they are. They just invest, invest in that. So we would have those conversations later on.
Okay. As long as we have those conversations, again, when we had the one-on-ones with Alexandria, I'm on their fan club. And, and I have been talking around the country because I work with a bunch of other cities on climate change and you couldn't ask for, for something nicer than that. I support this. I'm happy if there's no public comment to second the motion.
Perfect. You can second it.
I'm seconded.
We could still go to public comment. I'm looking. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second and we have no hands raised. Can we call for the vote, please?
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, did I miss you? Anders?
Oh, no, it's okay. I haven't raised my hand, but I just want to make sure that I'm like getting out a council member an opportunity to weigh in on this topic. So I, I do understand the current land use on this TOD zone and it is specified, the land use destination is being specified in the MSASP. And this very, oh, sorry. Could you bring back that map, please? Sorry.
I probably just didn't want to steal, steal your talking.
So it is the red dotted line, you know, rectangle, right? And this also happens to be at El Camino Real and Millbury Avenue corner where we currently have a RFP out for request for proposal to be developed on city owned property. And also in there, I think we have specified that we like to see a hotel development as part of the proposal. Obviously, we have an intent to ensure that this corner is nicely developed and for the highest and best use so that Millbury can capture the maximum benefit as a result of this future development, hopefully sooner rather than later. We all want to see Millbury, you know, developed, especially that corner is so iconic to all of us. You know, adding, you know, bio safety lab, bio safety level two to the land use destination. How does it play into this highest and best use strategy and objective that we have for this corner? Given we've, I think we've done some study in the past where we want to see a hotel being done at that location. I kind of want to see what, you know, what the potential revenue model or impact of that would be. And how does that help achieve the goal of making sure that this corner is being developed for its highest, for, for highest and best use? Come on, we to ask that question.
Councilmember Funk, highest and best use for, we did for our own city surplus plant. For the owner of the corner, we did not do a study on that.
I understand, but you know, we also have city owned property at that location, right? I think we have several pieces of property there. And, and I think the overall goal is to ensure that this corner is nicely developed, right? For as high as and best use so that Millbury can be a part of this, you know, future development, hopefully whatever that whatever proposal that comes in that we can evaluate. But I think we specify that to be hotel at some point. And I think it's also on the RFP as well, which is a public document.
So I'll, I'll take, I'll take a stab at this, but the city, the city property, highest and best use came back as a hotel. This location that we're talking about is not considering our property. Our property will be in that location. But what we're proposing tonight is anything that's developed around our highest and best use would be allowed to have level two bio safety. So it doesn't pertain to the actual development of our land. But the TOD, that, the, the surrounding properties.
Well, I guess we're adding the zoning destination and the allowable use to the entire.
We're expanding the zoning to bio safety level two in this, not necessarily on our property, but in the orange zone.
The purple zone, right?
Excuse me, purple.
The purples, the purple zone. Yeah. And, and I would just say that all, all we're doing is we're just adding, I think as the mayor said, we're just adding another land use into the TODs. So now it's just, you know, there's a multiple array of land uses and highest and best use would be, you know, dependent on the private property owner or developers study as to, you know, what they would determine that as best use, whether it be residential, standard, you know, class A office, retail, additional hotel, biotech. So all this, this just adds to the array of uses that are allowed in the TOD zone. We're not mandating.
No, I, I understand that, Tom, and I appreciate that. I think fundamentally speaking, I do not object to adding more flexibility to the use, to the land use destination for that location. If anything, yeah, if anything, adding more land use destination to it, give it more flexibility, it just gives us more option to achieve better and more more efficient use of, of those property and more development options to it. So, so that's certainly is a, it's a good thing. But I think, you know, in the course of that, obviously this is a process as well because we also have to go through the Airport Land Use Committee. But out of all this, I think we should, it's important for us to focus on evaluating what is the highest and best use. Given that we do have an RFP out and, and to evaluate it based on what is the highest and best use and best potential for economic development perspective for, for Millbury as we evaluate future RFP projects comes in. I just want to emphasize that.
Okay.
But I'll be supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, let me see if I missed anybody else. Make sure. Looks like no other hands. And we have a motion and we have a second. Could we please call for the vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holber?
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
The City Council directed staff to prepare amendment to the Millbury Station area specific plan to allow with a conditional use permit hazardous use classified as bio safety level two uses in a portion of the transit oriented development zone located east of, east of El Camino Real, west of the railway and north of Millbury Avenue, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for SFO safety compatibility zone two by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. So that concludes the agenda tonight. It's 9:17. Let's see if we go through council comments and can we please be respectful of everybody's time and limit our comments to three minutes? Let's see if we go through council comments and can we please be respectful of everybody's time and limit our comments to three minutes? Councilmember Holliver, would you like to start?
Sure. I attended the C C A G congestion management environmental quality meeting yesterday. There was a discussion about micro mobility. Bike, shooter, scooter share. Programs and. With a demand analysis, they found quite a bit of demand in San Diego County. And C C A G will continue to work on, on how a program will work, whether it be up at C C A G or another group like. Dot org. Um, or up to individual cities. Um, there's also a discussion about the. O bag free. Funding cycle, which is coming up. Very shortly. Um, approximately twenty one million will be available for large projects, for projects over one million dollars each. Eleven million to do for small projects under one million. And we call for projects in. May and June, so we have some good projects in mind for that. See, uh, I attended the commute dot org board meeting last week and their. We thought we were going to be working with Jefferson Union High School District on a pilot program. For transportation for staff housing, there's a new, um, staff housing project that is opening. Daylight City. We will be working with. The district to facilitate van pool on programs that will be banned at least. To residents there and they'll be. Hooked one together to the different school sites. Let's see, I attended the Sister Cities Commission meeting yesterday. It was just, uh, tree planting at the rec center. There's going to be, um, thirty six inch. Olive tree, fruitless olive tree that'll be planted. And don't know yet on the date, but hopefully in time for the opening, direct on June eleven. Uh, there's also, um, some interest in perhaps beginning a friendship city with. Taipei, Shun, Taiwan, or actually for a particular district because it's a very large city in Taiwan. And there is a subcommittee forum to explore how to facilitate that. One other. Now that was announced today, the county, San Diego County Board of Supervisors announced they are resuming in person meetings. Next week. So I'm hoping you can follow the lead and resume our in person meetings. In the future, um, perhaps the technology subcommittee can meet at some point. Soon to discuss. How facilitate hybrid meeting format would work like and what. Upgrades may be needed for council chambers. That's all I have now. Thank you.
That's all, that's a lot. Councilmember Snyder?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, C C A G B pack. Kind of along the lines, I hadn't been told the grants were working down that small, but this thirty seven million dollar four or five year grant cycle. Will have two B pack members, two C M A members. Community congestion management, environmental quality and four staff members on it. Uh, S F O roundtable staff at the airport are working on a new report structure. That will incorporate the type of sound that we get in Millbrae as opposed to just looking at flight noise. Once an airplane has left the ground. Emergency services meeting met last week. We did vote and it is now official that all certs all over the county. Can move easily from one city to another. They'll have one name tag that has. Some standard information on it, even if the name tags are made at the city level. So for Millbrae cert, we need to get everybody, get a new updated name tag, which allows you on to an emergency disaster site on there. On that, um, the other thing is emergency services. Uh, they'll be coming back with a. Probably a budget, a zero net increase for next year. I told the city manager it might be two point nine percent, but I was the only one that didn't vote. To hang on to our reserves for new disasters like flash flooding. M C A C, community enhancement, we heard about their, the tree project tonight. They will be bringing the adopt a spot to council as soon as we can finish with the legal. Legals looking at the application and the liability waiver on that. And then we had a couple of fire. Shared subcommittee meetings. I don't want to take anything away from Anders. Apparently at our last meeting, we, we. Shook up the chief, chief Baron, who complained to a city manager in another city who. At any rate, I, I, I won't go into that now, but, um, we do have to look at the fire. Bond measure, bond measure, bond measure or a parcel tax coming up in twenty twenty four. And I think it would behoove an update to all of council of what we want to do with our fire department. And Anders may have more to say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Done.
Councilmember Feng?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just to. Co tell on what. Councilwoman Schneider just mentioned, I think we spent a little time encouraging our, uh, C C F D chief Baron, uh, to step up. Uh, and continue to support Millbrae. Uh, you know, we discussed many things, you know, from budgeting to our representations on. The C C F D board. And so, you know, also discuss some of the things that are important to Millbrae. Right, uh, you know, including response times and, and how to make sure that our citizens. You know, would be. Properly cared for and, and rescued should they find themselves in a situation where they need their help. And how important C C F D's role is in providing those assistance, you know, when that time comes. And, you know, also, you know, as Councilwoman Schneider mentioned, I think as we consider. You know. Our future. Bond measure is that, is what a technical term should be the bond measure to look at our, um, how we spend our fire dollar. You know, we need to be strategic about it and, and figure out what is the best way for Millbrae moving forward. So we will have greater discussion on that shortly in the future. More to come on that topic. Um, another thing I want to report is that a number of youth leaders have. Continue together to engage and help our senior community members, you know, how to use Zoom, how to use Zoom and use technologies. Showing them how to use FaceTime and signing up the email account for the first time in their lives and. Set, help setting up the Amazon accounts. They've been doing that in the library every weekend, every Saturday. Uh, late morning. Uh, really proud of these youth leaders who are volunteers who continue to run this program and they will continue to do so throughout the month of May. Uh, and, uh, I'm really proud of these, you know, youth leaders, how they, you know, they're, they're growing in terms of the team. That is helping our seniors and then we're seeing more senior participating. Uh, so really proud of their effort. Uh, attended the Lions meeting last Wednesday. Uh, and celebrated the success of our Leos, you know, also Councilwoman Schneider was there as well. Uh, and also being a Leo advisor. Thank you so very much. Um, and seeing how all their hard works and, you know. Finally getting recognized and paid off, which is really excellent. You know, we don't celebrate enough of. Uh, our youth leaders' work, um, you know, from the plastic bag recycling program with the new benches all the way to. How much hard work they've done on the suicide prevention and awareness program. Excellent work. Thanks to these Leos for their effort. It's nice to see. These young leaders stepping up, you know, gives us a lot of hope, you know, with, uh, future leadership here in Millbrae. Uh, also the Lions Club have donated twenty, is it twenty five thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken to the rec center? So big hands to the Leo, absolutely to the Lions Club. You know, thank you so much for, you know, donation. A lot of help to all of us. So it's good to see communities coming together and, you know, really help with this rec center truly is a. An effort for the entire village here. So. So excited to see that. Thank you so very much for the Lions Club. Yeah, that's all I got for now. Thank you.
You don't want to plug our Sal board?
Oh, yeah, of course. I, I did that, you know, two council meeting in a row. I, I kind of want to give that opportunity to you, Madam Mayor.
No, say it one more time. Go ahead.
So, uh, yeah, I, I need to get up the date. Uh, is it eight, uh, is it August nineteen if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, uh. Flash mute, you know, we have a Sal board golf tournament coming up, August nineteen. Uh, we're signing up as many donors as well as sponsors as we can, different levels. Uh, sponsor, you know, uh, a whole, you know, donate an item for auction. Whatever you can do to help our Sal board. Uh, it's a great cause, help a lot of. Uh, kids who are in need, uh, sometimes even at risk. Um, it's, it's a great way to help those who are. Less fortunate than we are, you know, it, it's, it's an excellent program. So, uh, please participate.
Are you there? There you go. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'm gonna try. Hopefully Zoom won't go out again. Sorry about that. Uh, welcome back, Elaine. Nice to see you. Uh, we missed you, but you, you had good support while you're gone. Uh, Lions Club, Lamita Park barbecue was a huge success. So many families turned out. Um, I froze, but everybody else, Angelina was there. It was great. Um, really wonderful turnout. The school really put on a show too with music and all the kids dancing and stuff. So that was just a wonderful event. Uh, our aging task force is really progressing nicely. Uh, we had a meeting today, so that was lovely. Also. Uh, Angelina had mentioned, and I hope we're going to look into at a previous meeting, transportation opportunities. From Lamita Park to our library, to the rec center. Hopefully we can, um, work with either C M A C or C C A G or even M T C. To try to find safe solutions that might be a part of safe routes to school. In the future. So that was great. I understand that our new cameras. Have already shown great success. So compliments to our chief Christina Corpus there. Uh, I guess we already have one arrest, so don't come to Millbrae if you want to commit a crime because you're going down. So that was, uh, wonderful. Recreation Center donor wall contributions. If you can get it in. And the names complete, we will take them up until Friday, but that's it. That's the drop dead. Uh, deadline. So if you want your name on a donor wall at the recreation center for now, for the opening. Please get your contributions in as soon as possible. I gotta ask the, um, city manager. I understand the school district is doing some sort of a bond. And I don't think we've been briefed on it. We do need to be briefed on that. Uh, they're going to put it on the ballot. So it would be a benefit to all of us on the council if we knew exactly what was being sought there. And, uh, I also attended the C M A C meeting and the C C A G meeting about. Micro mobility, O bag funding. I voted against the O bag funding because. I really think our city and many other cities need to get, uh, more significant projects out there. That we can see, seek funding for. So I'll be working with, uh, Sean from C C A G. To see what we can do. Uh, I want to thank right now at the rec center, I've been pushing for these beautiful lighted benches. And our unions, our local unions may be able to help us there. So we are in the process. They are stepping up. Uh, they have shown interest. In helping us get these very dramatic and beautiful lighted benches. In the back of the, um, rec center on the patio there. So kind of excited about that, fingers crossed. Hopefully we can get all that done. Also following up, um, city manager. The M T C has sent out a survey about transit oriented developments that somebody in our staff. Is supposed to be responding to in such a way that our city interests are being accurately represented. So we need to be careful as to who on staff is responding there. And, um, at for our council member Feng, it's renewal of the parcel tax. To support our fire services. So you, when it's not a bond, it's a actually renewal of the parcel tax. That's the partial assessment that, um, is coming up. And I think drumroll, that is about it. Congratulations on the Citizens Academy. Please keep us informed. Um, as to the attendance, uh, we may be setting up something new there too. So thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Okay, Darcy, the next time somebody complains from council about acronyms, I want you to remember C C A G, O P E G, O P E C, M T C. Is.
Busted. Busted. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You are absolutely correct.
And, and just to add one more, there's the heart board directors that I've been attending and also on the special meeting, uh, special group that. Task force team to come up with some creative ideas to work on Rena numbers, preservation, first time home buyer programs. And all of that good stuff. So hopefully I'll be reporting some good success on that soon.
We'll have a game show on acronyms.
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, I'm just having fun with it. The other, uh, the mayor civic court in council, uh, was invited to a beautiful tour of the rec center. Thank you, uh, Mackenzie and Tom and Eduardo and. I shouldn't have started. I don't remember everybody that was there, but it was, the staff was great and I think everybody really enjoyed it. It was a great tour. And, um, I was, the Sal, the Sal event, Sheriff's Activity League event that's coming up. In, um. In August is going to be a big county event that Millbrae gets to host. So that's why, you know, I'm, I'm trying to. Mention it every week because we could use the support of everybody. We want to see Rotarians, Lions, city members, staff. City workers, um, residents, of course, any constituents that can, um, participate in it. I, I'm hoping that we could really show this event off in our beautiful city of Millbrae. And Christina, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but Christina is part of the Sal Activity League, um, Sheriff Activity League Board as well. And she's working, um. Christina, do you have like a program that you would like to plug or give an example of what Sal does? Because I know that you work with a lot of the programs. Did I miss her? Maybe she signed off. Well, I'll give an example. They do a lot of the soccer, they do arts, they do, uh, fun runs, women, women can do it. Christina was part of the, the, the young teen run runners. We had golf here in Millbrae, but it facilitates a lot of activities. For, um, a lot of youth that doesn't have, doesn't have the opportunities to see it. And one of the greatest things was in our own backyard, Green Hills. They were able to, um, actually, uh, youth was able to go on to the private club and we had a golf, a golf team out there. So, um, I'm hoping that everybody sees the value as Anders and I and Christina do and will help participate in the event coming up soon. With that being said, I was gonna, uh, close in memory of Officer Chakuti when, I mean, we can never think about his services enough. And what he did and his family has done for the city of Millbrae. So, um. With all, with everything said and done, I'd like to close in honor of him. Anything else, anybody?
Actually, Mayor, when you brought up the Rena codes, I'd attended a couple of meetings, apparently. A city across the bay has sued. And got an audit done and that there may have been some data that was not looked at correctly in establishing Rena standards. One of them being jobs housing balance within a city. So there might be maybe kind of sort of some new Rena numbers that could help us.
Yes. Agreed. There's a lot of work being done on it. Anything else, anybody? Okay, nine thirty seven. And we will adjourn. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.